...town meeting member. So, it seems like a long time ago, but Monday at about eight o'clock, when I explained what happened once the override proposal ballot question passed, the warrant committee found that they had $300,000. And we put some to a capital request, and we put $33,000 to the school, and we put the balance in the reserve fund. So if you weren't there for that, I'll just quickly tell you. We discovered that there was a $33,000 hole we could fill that would prevent the disruption of four, I believe elective teachers at the school, and ensure the continuation of those programs for next year. And we felt this was the best bang for the buck. And that's where the $33,000 came from at the last minute. Does that help?
Thank you. Ms. Augustine, are you recognized?
Can we bring that back down? Thank you. Mr. Moderator, actually, maybe Dr. Pavlichek could answer one of my questions, and then I'll make a comment on the chart that was presented that you do have to provide to the state on the breakdown. The increase in the administration costs, was that .02 or .2% on the chart that you .3%. It was years ago when Ms. Gormly took over, and there were many meetings about the budget. Because anyone who's new sees one big lump sum, and this presentation, next to what we've gotten in the past, just surpasses everything. It really clearly shows the townspeople that this administration is actually not only giving all of their time and efforts to our children, but they're giving up some income there. I mean, who else takes, you know, such a low increase? Interesting also, when the superintendent, Ms. Gormly, was working with the mic, and she said, "I'm good," I just had to stand up and say, "No, Mary, you're great. Thank you so much."
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Hello, Emily Speck, Precinct 10, and a mother of a Tucker kindergartner going into first grade next year. So I had some questions about the initiative budget. I heard the word targeted a lot, and I have to say, as someone who's receiving some of the recruitment for those programs -- sorry, I'm gonna talk a little -- that sometimes the recruitment for those programs does not feel very targeted. And I want to make sure if we're spending this money, that it's going to the students who need it most. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about how we're actually targeting the students, especially for the new preschool program, the ones who are really going to benefit the most in this town, those who would fall into those achievement gap groups. And also, how are these Saturday programs and these extended day programs really targeting the kids who need it, as opposed to whatever kids you can get into the program once you have the funding for the program? So that's my first question. My second question has to do with the STEM program. I'm a big fan of that in theory. I'm a science educator myself. What I do have to say is I know the Milton Fund for Education provided new science kits for the kindergartens this year, and my son got very little use out of them. So I want to make sure we spend this money, it's getting used, and we're having follow-through with these programs, so that it's worth the money we spend on them. Because I believe in these programs, but I want to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Ms. Gormly, you're recognized.
When you began to speak, I said perhaps you didn't like the word targeted. And so, I don't know if I really liked that word targeted myself now that you brought it up. But what we do is, when students are in subgroups, we identify the children who are in the subgroups. So this targeting is so specific that the children whose families identify as free and reduced, traditionally, we would wait until the MCAS scores came back, and then we would know which students were identified as free and reduced, their families as low income. And so, we have worked with Desi, and we have worked with the individuals in the Milton Public Schools to actually put confidentially that information in the hands of the teachers. So that historically, the teachers didn't know who those children were, and my analogy is, we're not going to wait and be surprised when their MCAS comes back, and those children were in that subgroup. And again, through the MCAS data, through self-identification by parents, through the identification of their individual plans, we know who these children are. And in one of the bullets, you saw individual success plans, all of the children in the subgroups, all of the children based on their prior MCAS scores. I would encourage you to sit down and have the Tucker principal actually explain to you the student success meetings going over every single child. And my analogy again is that no child should be left behind, so that we actually have the principals report to us. We, and you're an outstanding audience, we actually keep the data, has the family been contacted? Did the family reject services? How many times did you contact the family? What, you know, was it transportation? We have gone so far as to try, if it's transportation is an issue in the summer, to pair up the children. And so, I would encourage you to see the Tucker principal and find out, just again, we don't want to just send out a memo, and whoever responds receives the targeted instruction. Those who are in the groups have to benefit from the instruction. And then your sec -- oh, the iSTEM, the STEM at the elementary school. So first of all, the STEM program, the Innovation Pathway, which was the last slide, begins at grade one. The MFE did purchase materials. We met with the MFE, and I see MFE board members that were with us the other day. The purchases at the elementary, they're dividing their funds among the three levels. The majority of the, a tremendous number, is going to the kindergarten. They responded that the kindergarten teachers wanted iSTEM materials. They knew that they had really found a connection with first, second, third, moving into fourth graders, so more supplies, more professional development. But you, as an educator, and having met you before, know you understand the value of that professional development. Again, the teachers have to be provided the training, but I will guarantee you that, equal to what's happened at grades one, two, and three in the Milton Public Schools, and the response, and the enthusiasm, and the feedback from the parents, we'll look for the same response in kindergarten.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Margaret Carrolls, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I just want to thank the school committee, superintendent, and staff, and the warrant committee, and everybody for really working hard to keep teachers in front of students. I've sat through a lot of these presentations, and I know that's your priority. But I want to say that we're starting to see it chip away. And I think losing a teacher at the Pierce, that troubles me. Going off-team for social studies and history, that troubles me. Losing an assistant principal, I think that's a big problem. I think we've seen a lot of kind of the middle management tier of people have jobs combined, and people doing multiple things, and I think that means less support for teachers, less evaluation time, and it's starting to affect our schools, and we need to watch this. I'd like to know, just a quick question, why is that history teacher gone and that assistant principal? Some other things got put back, like what was the thinking behind that?
Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulus, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member and Chair of the School Committee. Thank you, Ms. Carrolls. It troubled all of us. It troubled all of the school leadership team, it troubled the school committee, it troubled all of us. But the fiscal realities were such that we had to make these cuts this year. What I can tell you is that this was the consensus view, not only of the school committee, and not only of the superintendent, and the assistant superintendents, this was all the principals. This was all of the department heads, working together to figure out where those choices had to be made. And so, while they were all difficult, these were, this was the collective view as to what we could cut. They were hard choices, as I said before, but this was the collective view of the professional educators that we rely on, as overseen by the school committee, with the input, and I have to say that again, with the input of the PTO. So I have to say, the thinking was that we need to make these cuts, and let's figure out the best way to do it. I will say that the advancement budget was important. That was a priority. And that's been a priority for the last three years, and it was a priority. And when we balanced the harms, that was where we thought the choices needed to be made. So I don't know if I've given you anything specific, but it was just really a balancing, and it was a collective judgment of all the constituent groups.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
The motion carries. Article 31, excuse me, Article 32. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the support of the Blue Hills Regional Technical School for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, and to act on anything related to there too. It is recommended the sum of $914,238 be appropriated for the purpose set forth in this article, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $914,238 be raised from the tax levy. The Blue Hills Regional assessments recommend FY16 of $914,238. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. The motion carries. Article 33, to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the support of the Consolidated Facilities Department for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, and to act on anything related to there too. It is recommended the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommended." Consolidated Facilities, salary and wages, it's recommended FY16 of $707,998. General expenses, recommended FY16 of $233,526. For total Consolidated Facilities, recommended FY16 amount of $941,524. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $881,524 be raised from the tax levy, and the sum of $60,000 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. Article 34. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for interest in maturing debt for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, and to act on anything related to there too. It is recommended the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommended." Interest in maturing debt, interest, recommended FY16 of $1,024,316. Maturing debt, recommended FY16 of $3,008,378. For total interest in maturing debt, recommended FY16 of $4,032,694. And that to meet said appropriation, the following sums be applied. $126,003 from the Capital Stabilization Fund. $160,331 from the funds released from the overlay reserve. $570,540 from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. And the remainder of $3,175,820 from the tax levy. This will require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? I know what you mean, Mary. All those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. Article 35. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the stabilization fund, the capital stabilization fund, and the post-employment benefits stabilization fund, in accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B. To determine how said appropriation shall be raised, whether by transfer from available funds, borrowing, or otherwise, and to act on anything related to there too. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it is recommended the town vote the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommended." Stabilization fund, excuse me, stabilization funds. Stabilization fund, recommended FY16, zero dollars. Capital stabilization fund, recommended FY16, zero dollars. Post-employment benefits stabilization fund, recommended FY16, zero dollars. For grand total stabilization funds, recommended FY16 of zero dollars. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of zero dollars is to be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. Article 36. To see if the town will vote to accept, actually, I'm gonna read just the recommendations, mostly a rehash. This is submitted by the Town Government Study Committee. It is recommended the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 32B, Section 40 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as amended, which provides that a town may establish a separate trust fund to be known as Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, to reduce the unfunded actuarial liability of health care and other post-employment benefits. And that the town appropriate the sum of $536,251 for the purposes set forth in this article, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $389,023 be transferred from the post-employment benefits stabilization fund, and the sum of $147,228 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. This will require a two-thirds vote. And Ms. Neely, you're recognized. Ms. Neely, Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member and Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee. This article is a very positive step forward. It recognizes the fact that we've begun to set up a structure to set up an account to fund the health insurance of retirees in town. You can see there's a small sum of money that's in that account right now, but the important piece is that this account setup has been recommended by the Government Accounting Standards Board, it's been recommended by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, and the important point is it'll be officially counted in our statements when reviewed by the rating agencies, for example. The history is that, as employees were hired in the town over the years, there was not a set aside of funds for folks that were obviously going to retire, and at some point later in time, have health insurance. So this provides that vehicle for that purpose. And let me just point out that there is a link, if you will, to the pension program. And I would bring your attention, and we early on Monday night discussed on page 32 and 33, the contributory retirement program. And in that program, you'll see that we put $5.2 million as an appropriation. It's important to point out, after that meeting, I think Ted Dabler, remember Ted Dabler, asked a question about the funding, and I thought it was worthwhile for the members to know that, when you look at that 5.3 million, that's on page 32, 1.5 of that is the current cost, and 3.7 million is the amortization. If you look further into the comment, it cites in the comment here that expected full funding is 2025. Well, that's not a static number, because it's obviously based upon future liabilities, based upon the investment performance. But the important point is, when you go back and say, 3.7 million is currently being used out of the 5.3 for amortization, the plan would be, hopefully, that would be shifted over into fund these retiree costs for health insurance that are described in the article we're discussing, and estimated with a liability of 92.8 million. So we have a long way to go, but I think we need to hold the town to its feet, and continue to contribute slowly at least, if not more than we've done this year, but certainly continue the plan to take that 3.7 million, which will grow, and I have the schedule, Town Accountant Amy Dexter gave me the schedule, but certainly to transfer, once we fully fund the pension plan, and get this plan funded, because this is a critical liability for the town to address. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Neely. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Hello, I'm Jay Funling, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I'm also a retirement actuary. I don't usually tell people that, but I feel very strongly in support of Article 36, and wanted to, oh, not that one, and wanted to tell you what I see around this. Now, I'm not a member of the Retirement Board, I don't have any inside information, but I just did want to share what I've seen around Article 36 and why I support it. Most importantly, I only have four slides, so it won't be too long. So what is this about? This is about other post-employment benefits. What does that mean? Pretty much, it means retiring medical. There might be some life insurance in there, but the big dollar driver is retiring medical. So that's what we're talking about. So if we switch to the next slide, what's the agreement between the town employees and the town citizens every year? Every year, the employees provide us with their labor and their services. That makes us happy. Happy's a technical term, but stick with me. And what do we give them back in return for their labor? We give them salary. We give them benefits. We give them a promise to pay them a pension when they retire, and, as Mr. Neely just said, we put money aside every year, so that money is there to pay for their pension when they retire. And the other thing we give them is a retiring medical promise. We promise, when they retire, we'll pay for their retiring medical benefits. But we don't put money aside for that. We just promise. We say, in 30 years, we promise we will give you your benefits. That's the only thing on this list, that in the year the employee provides us their labor, we don't put any cash aside to pay for it. There's a disconnect there. And this promise of future benefits, that has a dollar value. So if we can switch to the next slide. I pulled up the most recent town financials, just to see where the dollars are going for this plan. Now, someone on Monday night asked about, what is this annual required contribution, and are we contributing it? The annual required contribution, the way I think of it is, this is what we should be contributing to stop digging ourselves deeper in a hole. In fact, if we do contribute the annual required contribution every year, we will get out of the hole in 30 years. So that's a good thing to contribute. We actually contributed in 2014, 3.5 million, not the 10.8 million of retired required contribution. There were some other accounting items that also helped us out, but at the end of the year, our obligation grew, our liability grew by 5.7 million dollars. This is bad. This is the largest liability on the town financials, as far as I saw, and it grew by over $5 million last year. That's not a good situation. So that's where we are. One other line item I would like to clarify up there, when I say we contributed $3.5 million, what do I mean by that? That includes current benefit payments. So a retiree went to the hospital in 2014, the hospital sent the town a bill, the town paid it. That's what's called a contribution. So that entire $3.5 million you see up there, it's not funding this promise that we're making to our current employees, it's just getting by. It's just paying the bills that we have to pay this year. So we haven't yet started funding the promise, but there's good news with Article 36. So if you can switch to the next slide. Article 36, I'm strongly in support of. It sets up a vehicle that allows us to fund these promises that we're making to our employees, so that the money's there when it comes time to retire. But I would like to think about what's coming up in future years. And I would like to ask the Retirement Committee, and the members of the town government that set the budget, to consider how much we can put into this trust in future years. For example, next year, will we be able to fund more? Will we be able to fund up to the annual required contribution? Which, as I said, that's just what we need to contribute to stop digging ourselves deeper in this hole. I know money is tight in the town budget. I know next year, whether or not there is an override, money will be tight. And there are many competing demands for the town's money. And I would just like this to be one of those competing demands, one of those important demands, for where the town can put its money. And I know what the problem is. The problem is, this is not exciting. You know, it's fun, or it's not fun, but it makes me feel good to appropriately fund the schools. It makes us all feel good to fund the library. We like doing things like that. This is not fun. This is not exciting. It's boring, but it's also important. We're making a promise to our employees. We're promising we'll provide these benefits when they retire, 30 years from now. Let's see what we can do about putting some cash behind that promise.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? I'll remind you again, it takes a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. Article 37. Now, Article 37, I'm going to go directly to the recommendation, and the recommendation is a revised recommendation. Thank you for the signal from the warrant committee. Which hopefully you all have, it's on page three of three of a double sheet that was passed out the other night, or made available.
I move that we waive the reading of the revised recommendation in Article 37, no
All those in favor of the motion to avoid the reading?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Thank you. That's fine. We are going to have a full presentation, and I'm confident that you, in fact, will get, will understand what you're going to be voting on before we move to a vote. And so, with that, even though I've just signaled, you know, we have this new experience, I just want to make sure we have the revised recommendation being displayed. Now, we'll just go directly to any presentation that our chairman of our Board of Selectmen, Tom Hurley, might have. Did you wish to be recognized?
Yes, please.
Okay. Chairman of the Warrant Committee, Mr. Hayes, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ted Hayes, Chairman of the Warrant Committee, Precinct Number 3, Town Meeting Member. I just want to preface Tom's remarks with the observation that I think this is a brilliant funding mechanism, and it's kind to the taxpayers, and I think it deserves every bit of your attention, and I may say something again later. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of Board of Selectmen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. I'm gonna take this off, so I can, if I can, maybe I won't.
It's a test, Tom.
There we go. All right. That's better. So obviously, Article 37 is to establish a debt service stabilization fund. You can see by the pictures up there, we're talking about fire stations, and we're talking about DPW. I thought that was an appropriate DPW picture, considering the winter we just had, so that's what we're talking about. So we can agree on a bunch of things right now. Our fire stations, our DPW facility are obsolete, and they're in poor condition, no question. I think we can all agree that they should be brought up to 21st century standards. So whether we reconstruct the original facilities, build new facilities, the cost is going to be in the tens of millions of dollars. We don't know exactly how much yet, but we know it's going to be a lot of money. For purposes of some of the analysis I did, I just used a number of approximately 50 million. I have nothing really to base that on, other than we do know that there's been a $20 million number thrown around for DPW facility. Might be, sure. So the first question, can we pay for this with our operating budget? The answer is obviously no. The debt service costs would be of a magnitude of such that it would have a severe impact on normal municipal services. So a debt exclusion of some kind is going to be necessary at some point in time to build these fire stations, which means, you know, an override vote to have a debt exclusion. So what does Article 37 do? It allows the selectmen to request a home rule petition to establish a stabilization fund. The purpose of that stabilization fund The purpose of that stabilization fund is to stabilize the impact to the taxpayers of annual debt service costs relating to the future issuance of debt for the fire station DPW facility. So again, why do we need it? The town's currently paying for the schools and the library building with debt exclusion money. This year, we'll pay about $2.55 million in debt. The taxpayers will. That's over and above what they're paying for their normal real estate taxes. Again, that's the debt exclusion. If we do nothing, the taxpayers, as this debt goes down, what we charge the taxpayers goes down at the same rate. So by 2029, that debt will be totally paid off. And the taxpayers will gradually see, you know, diminishing, you know, costs and reductions, actually, in the real estate tax that's somewhat offset by Prop 2.5 tax increases. If we attempt to start construction of the fire stations and DPW in the next three, four, or five years, we're going to experience a steady decline in debt exclusion, part of the real estate taxes. And then it's going to spike when we start to build these fire stations. Now, for many taxpayers, those spikes are problematic as they attempt to balance their own budgets. So the fund is a mechanism to keep the annual amount of what the taxpayers are paying for the debt for the schools and library building and the new issuances at a constant level. That level would either be the level that they're paying in 2016, which is approximately $2,550,000, or a slight increase. The recommendation of the Warren Committee is the 2016. My initial request was an amount of $3 million, which would actually be an increase. So we'd be asking the taxpayers to pony up a little bit more. But here's a slide which will show you, and this is based upon the $2.5 million of debt. The blue line represents if we put money into a stabilization fund, and if we issue in 2022, $14.4 million of bonds; in 2025, $17 million in bonds; and 2023, $33, $14.9 million in bonds. If we don't stabilize, and these amounts were carefully picked because, based upon my assumptions, using a $2.5 million level funding, this is the amount and the years that we could stick debt in there and still be able to stabilize it at $2.5 million. So if we don't stabilize it, you can see that, you know, in those years when we issue that debt, the cost of the taxpayers, should they approve, it spikes way up. And then, and it gradually starts to come down to zero back over here in 2060. If we stabilize it, then the taxpayers just pay a constant $2.5 million, what they're paying right now. And then again, when you get up around 2047, that's about the end of it, and it starts... We've paid for everything. So under this analogy, the first $14.4 might be a central fire station. The $17 million might be the DPW facility, and $14.9 might be the other two fire stations. So that's kind of the thought of it. If we use a $3 million one, we get the stuff a little quicker. We can issue $17 million worth of debt in 2020. We can issue another $20 million in debt 2025, and $14 million in 2031. And again, it's the same basic thing. You can see, we straight-line it at $3 million, as opposed to seeing those peaks and valleys, and then it slowly starts to come down. So how does the fund work? Taxpayers will be charged a fixed amount annually, either $2.5 million or the $3 million. Some or all of that cost will be used to pay principal and interest costs on the debt exclusion, to the extent that the annual debt cost is less than that $6 million of either $2.5 or $3 million, then the difference will be put into the stabilization fund. The fund will be invested, using prudent investor rules to minimize risk and maximize return. New bonds will be issued at various times. When the bonds are issued, the debt cost would likely exceed the fixed amount. The money would come out of the stabilization fund to make up the difference between what the taxpayers are paying and the actual debt service for that year. So the timing and amount of new debt issued would be dictated by the annual exclusion amount charged to the taxpayers, the life of the new bond issues, the investment history in the stabilization fund, the interest rate on the bonds. And as a protection, this article limits the total debt issue to be stabilized to $50 million. And I'll explain that a little bit later. So how does the fund work? Again, after all the new debt has been issued, and it's evident that the balance in the stabilization fund is sufficient to cover future debt service and the future debt service shortfalls, the fund will cease, and the charges to the taxpayers will slowly diminish. The balance in the fund will be used until it's exhausted to, again, stabilize that debt. And if there is any excess at that point, it will be returned to the taxpayers. Okay, so what are some of the negatives of this? And I'll be honest. Like any other plan or strategy, it's based upon assumptions of future occurrences. And as we all know, assumptions are rarely ever exactly realized. So there is a risk, if the assumptions are not realized, that there is, would not be sufficient funds in the stabilization fund to stabilize a sufficient amount of debt to complete the projects. Even if the assumptions are correct, again, this whole premise is based upon a $50 million in construction cost, that may not be enough to complete the project. Nothing in life is free. There's a cost to the taxpayers. The total cost to the taxpayers over a 42-year period, under this analysis, would be something in the order of $80 million. That's based upon $50 million of debt, 4% interest over 30 years. And we're also asking the taxpayers to stop paying for something now that they, some of that, they won't see for several years. The article does have some safeguards in it to ensure that the taxpayers' rights under Proposition 2.5 are preserved. If the state approves the home rule petition, there will be a town-wide vote to approve the establishment of the fund and the funding of the fund. The planning process for the fire station and the DPW facility will continue in the same manner as any other capital project, and will ultimately come before a town meeting for a vote to accept each capital project and the specific issuance of the debt. In addition to that, if approved by town meeting, there will be a town-wide vote, again, required to approve the issuance of that debt. So again, that helps to preserve those rights. The fund can only be used for fire stations, DPW facility. It could not be used to apply to any other type of capital project. There is a cap established on the growth of the fund to ensure that it does not grow uncontrolled. The stabilization fund balance cannot exceed 2.5% of the then annual operating budget. This will prevent a buildup in the fund if the town's management does not come forward with a capital project. Then finally, there is a limit set on the amount of bonds that could be issued. The stabilization fund could only be used for the first $50 million of debt issued with respect to these projects. That gives the fund a specific life or end date. We cannot, even with future voter approval, keep the fund going and slowly build a Taj Mahal with it. And that's my presentation. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Yes, sir. That's your... You're recognized.
My name is Webster Collins. I'm a town meeting member from precinct nine. To be perfectly honest, I'm in shock. I am with the world's largest real estate firm, the largest real estate firm in New England. We build buildings every day. We have a construction management crew that builds these. We're building industrial buildings right now for $110 to maybe $125 a square foot, and they want to build 500,000 square feet in the real world, is what they're telling you at $50 million. Those numbers are absurd from someone that does this for a living every day. I just can't get over what I'm hearing this evening. I came in to talk on something completely different this evening. I'd never expected I'd be seeing something like this. I've got no problem whatsoever with stabilization funds, but the leading lights of coming up with numbers that are so huge, so hard to fathom in the world I live in, I just can't get over it. I want the town meeting and everyone here to really understand we've got to drop back and rethink this issue because what you have heard is nothing against the stabilization fund, but I am speaking totally against the belief of a Taj Mahal for $50 million. That is absolutely crazy, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As I preface this by, we don't have any hard numbers on what the costs are going to be. I'm using $50 million just based upon, you know, something that was said a long time ago that figured about $20 million for a DPW facility. Never seen that hard and fast. We don't know what the fire stations are going to cost. We know they're going to cost a lot of money. We know we're going to pay prevailing wages to build them, so that increases the price. You know, and again, this thing has a... If it... If when we get the final estimates in, it's less than that, and we issue less debt, there is a level on the buildup in this stabilization fund that it can't build up to more than 2.5% of the annual operating budget. So that, you know, if it does come in less, there's a built-in limiting factor to the whole thing.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Steve Sidlavage, precinct seven. I purposely wanted to hear the presentation tonight because in the recommendation of the Warren Committee, it specifically said this wasn't a tax increase. Well, the fact of the matter is, it is, because the taxes aren't... Never going down. I almost think it's gimmicky in the fact that it's almost like the turnpike authority. They establish a tax, and it never goes away. This is an exemption of the Prop 2.5, and it just... In good conscience, I could never vote for this. Because I don't think our constituents, and I know in precinct seven, clearly are aware of what we are taking up fully tonight. And for my vote, I would ask that the town meeting oppose this.
Thank you. Mr. Morash, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, precinct two, and chairman of the Firespace Needs Committee. If you heard what I said when I spoke, stepped up to the microphone earlier today, I tell you, the purpose of this next phase of the process was to try to get a handle around costs. We do not know what the cost of these fire stations will cost the town. It is a cost, and Mr. Sidlavage, I agree with you. You've got to pay for it. I mean, unless somebody hits the lottery in this auditorium and likes to give us that money, I'd greatly appreciate that. But there is a cost to what we have to do. And I would say that for the last 20, 30, 40 years, we've kind of not put any money into these facilities. Because let's show the picture of the snowstorm. Yeah, that was pretty nice. Everybody can relate to that. But nobody really cares about, you know, the stuff under the streets or streets. It's a town cost. Having said that, I support the article with the caveat that we do not know what that cost is going to be. I see this as a possible funding mechanism to do this, one of the best possible ways to do this. What that total cost is, I have no idea. No money in our committee on the fire side of this process knows what that is, but I think we need to get to that point. So we said we would come back to this committee by next May and let you know what those costs might be. But we have to start figuring this out as we go down this process. And I think that's what this article does. I understand your concerns about the $50 million, as Mr. Collins said. Wherever Webb is, I don't disagree with you, sir. But let's find out what the costs are before we start jumping out of the, you know, out of the airplane here, and let's see what it is so we can figure out how do we get to this point. It's getting to the point where we have to do some of these things now. I urge a yes vote on this. Thank you very much.
Yes. Mr. Chikello, you're recognized.
Anthony Chikello, a town meeting member for precinct four. For quite some time, a lot of people in town have been trying to figure out a mechanism to fund the kind of capital projects that we need to do in the town. And I think what Mr. Hurley has done here is try to take a stab at getting us a mechanism to do that. I'm not sure if this is a perfect mechanism, but it's certainly a mechanism that allows us to begin to put some money away for expenses that we know we have. Now, we dodged an enormous bullet by getting $150 million worth of construction done on the schools at very... A lot of money, but relatively minimal to the town compared to the overall cost. That's real dollars we spent. But if you look at every other town in the Commonwealth that's going to build one school now, they're spending more of their town's dollars than we did to do all six of our schools. That's not going to happen again. So I think what Mr. Hurley has proposed is a mechanism to try to begin to put some money away, number one, and number two, to come up with a means that makes more sense for funding capital projects. One of the problems, the structural problems with Prop 2.5 and the way it deals with capital overrides is the way that the cost starts very high and goes low. Now, when you bought it, took a mortgage to buy your house, you didn't pay $10,000 a month the first month and have it go down to paying, you know, $500 bucks a month at the last month. You had a level payment. And that's the way that people can budget and make sense. And so I think what Mr. Hurley's proposal here is to say, "We know we have these expenses, and we know they're coming up really soon." So this is one bite at the apple at trying to say, "Let's start to save and put away the money that we know we're going to need to spend in the next several years, and do so in a way that will even out, for purposes of the taxpayers, what they have to pay." So they won't have a big spike in their tax bill next year. That amount will be built into their budget. It will go up. It is a cost, there's no question. But I support the article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chikello. Mr. Hajar, you're recognized.
John Hajar, precinct nine. This sounds eerily similar to Nancy Pelosi in The Passage of Obama Kill. We've got to pass it so we know what's in it. And you talked, Mr. Chikello, about a mortgage. I mean, a mortgage, you know what the mortgage is. We don't know what the cost is. This sounds like a big boondoggle to me. We should know the cost before we vote for anything. It's a tax increase. We should vote it down. Our taxes are high enough. I urge a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Kathleen O'Donnell, precinct seven. I just wanted to point out that, reading this article, all that we're being asked to do right now is to authorize the selectmen to file special legislation, not actually borrow the $15 million. It's just an authorization, which they can choose to exercise now, or they could choose to exercise it next year when they have better figures. All it's doing, as I said, is just providing the authorization to file the legislation, not to actually do it tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Corcoran, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ned Corcoran, precinct three. I think I would add a couple of points, a couple of things that I heard and a couple of things that I think I understand. One is that there would be, if the legislation passes, there would be voter approval necessary before there would be any increase to your taxes to fund this process. Second, with respect to any particular project that would go forward, to the extent that debt would have to be issued, that would exceed the amount of money in the stabilization fund, we would have a second override to authorize that debt exclusion for each of those projects. I think this is a great idea. I'm sorry it's limited to fire and DPW, but I understand why it is because, over the next whatever period of time, the schools will be back, the library will be back, the police station will be back. There will be periodic times over the next 50, 100-plus years where we will be revisiting Prop 2.5 overrides for the purposes of capital reconstruction... Prop Two and a Half overrides for the purposes of capital reconstruction of our facilities. And this is an interesting and a progressive way to think about how we can stabilize the impact to the taxpayer over a long period of time to address those future capital needs, whatever they might be and whatever those costs might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sidlavage, you're recognized.
Steve Sidlavage, Precinct Seven. In response to one of the previous speakers, I would just say that when we voted for the schools and we voted for the library, it was with the expectation that we would pay that debt off, and we voted for it in a favorable manner. What we're being asked to do tonight is to give authority to the Board of Selectmen to seek legislation that will set up a fund that will divert that payment to the stabilization fund. So in fact, we're granting a lot of authority that the voters in our communities haven't had attention to. In addition, the only time a vote of the community would occur would be for a project. So once a project has been put forward, the town would have a vote on that project. But the fund, once the fund's established, they would start taking the difference of the paydown and putting it into the fund. So don't kid yourself, it's not, it's not going to come back to us, to the voter for a vote.
Excuse me, I actually was recognizing Mr. Hurley first, and then... I guess, first, I want to reiterate that all this is, is a home rule petition at this point. In order to fund this trust and not even establish this trust, we first need the approval of the state, second, we need the approval of the voters. So there are two bites at the apple. It could get rejected at the state level, and the voters could vote it down and say, no, we don't want it. So all we're looking for right now is the ability to put it on a ballot and ask the voters, do they want it or not? Secondly, there is a cap on the size of that stabilization fund. So if you don't issue debt, the fund would be stuck at two and a half percent of the then operating budget. So if it's at that level, then you couldn't charge the taxpayers anymore at that point. If a capital project never comes forward because the voters voted down, then it would be stuck at that level. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't keep issuing a debt override because the fund would have hit its maximum level. I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but, but there is that mechanism built into it.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. I'd like to refer you back to the discussion about the Article 15. I'd like to refer you back to the discussion about Article 15 and the Strong Town Administrator and how approving that would free up the selectmen to start to think about the types of decisions that boards of directors should be making. Forward-thinking decisions, strategic decisions, five-year plans. So whether we agree with or in favor of this article or not, I'd like to commend Mr. Hurley on what I think is a big idea, a forward-looking idea, and a way to perhaps smooth the taxes that we'll be paying over time. So for that, I think we should all commend him. I rise in favor of this article because I think that we have to think about these large capital projects that we will have to do. I don't think there's any question in any of our minds that we will need to build new fire stations. I don't think there's any question in any of our minds that if you look at the town audit of the town facilities that was done by an outside vendor, there are millions and millions and millions of dollars that will need to be done, repairs and maintenance that will need to be done. So this is a choice, and I agree, it's one that we should consider very carefully, but it's a choice as to whether, we're not, we're not voting to accept a $50 million cost. We're not voting to accept the capital projects. We're voting to create a mechanism that would allow us to smooth the impact of those capital projects over time. We get a chance to approve each capital project. So I think for those reasons and the safeguards which are built in, including votes by this body and votes by every resident and every registered voter in the town, that we have the opportunity to vote, to talk about the merits of each individual project. But I think this is a good idea, it's one we haven't had before, it's one we could have paid a consultant tens of thousands of dollars to give us, so I think it's a good idea and I urge your approval.
Yes, sir, you're recognized.
I'm Jay Funling, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. I like this idea a lot, but I do get concerned when I read the wording in Section Four. Money in the fund may be expended only for the purpose of the three fire stations and DPW. That makes me worry about trapped assets. Is there any possibility in the future that we'd be fortunate enough to have more money in this fund than it will cost us to build these buildings or to pay off the debt on these buildings or far enough in the future? And if so, have we written this in a way that there's no legal way to get the money out? Thank you.
Very good. Fair question. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, if the capital projects come in less or the interest rates are less, the stabilization fund must end when it is evident there is enough in the stabilization fund to stabilize whatever total debt is issued. So if we come back and we get actual cost estimates and go out for the capital projects, and instead of $50 million, it's only $30 million, that's all that's going to be issued, and that stabilization fund will have a shorter life because that $2.5 million will only, instead of going out 15 years, will go out a shorter period of time and then start to fall off quicker. And that's the way it's written.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Sean Fahy, Precinct Nine. I have no issue at all with what Mr. Hurley has suggested as a process, and he very well may have the most appropriate mechanism for beginning to establish funding for what we all need to do, and I think after what we went through with the schools, we realized that the can was kicked down the road for many years. However, my concern is beginning with a value, even today in town meeting where we say $50 million, the number to me, like any number of that size, is alarming, no pun intended, but all of us, I think our antennas go up when we hear a number like that. Now, I happen to be in the construction industry as well, and I run a small construction company. Webb Collins has a tremendous amount of experience, and I have an awful lot of confidence when he stands here at the mic and speaks that what he says is based on a long and successful career. There's an awful lot of data that's available in regard to the cost of fire stations and DPW facilities. Many have been built in many towns. My suggestion to town meeting tonight is that we oppose this right now and we collect better information, and before we begin a process, we have something that is more realistic and fair to the residents of the town based on some more factual values rather than starting with what we have here tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct Nine. Mr. Moderator, I have a couple of questions for a few different people. The first one, Selectman Hurley mentioned that this may not even be approved, so I wanted to find out, is this the first time that the legislation has ever received this? Is there any other city or town that has used this type of language? Because that was an interesting comment to hear you make. Secondly, Webster Collins, I respect everything he advises us on because of his expertise, and that makes me want to ask, why do we always have to reinvent the wheel? What is the average cost throughout the region, not necessarily just the state, but throughout the region for a firehouse? You know, we did once have a proposal for a Taj Mahal in this town, and a lot of effort went into it. It was the library, the first library proposal. I mean, now we've got our old beautiful library and everybody loves it, and we've increased the use of it and everything, but at the same time, there was a lot of time and effort wasted on something, and it also caused a lot of friction in the town. So instead of reinventing the wheel, is there a way to look at what average costs are so that, looking at this proposal, it would make more sense to say, you know, the $50 million is just pulled out of the sky, when in fact, you know, putting a few heads together could come up with a more reasonable idea. So for you, the moderator, I would ask the question, the process, because we haven't done this in some time, if, we do have two town meetings a year, the process for a study committee that would better inform us regarding this article, although I do want Mr. Hurley's answer also.
Okay.
And then if we had a study committee to make sure that it came back in the fall.
Okay, so I'm going to recognize Mr. Hurley, who's going to address the questions you raised, which basically I see them in two. There was, hey, has the state legislature ever had a proposal like this before? And the second one was, hey, isn't there an average cost to use for a firehouse? And I'm going to extend that question, Ms. Agostino, since I talked about the DPW as well. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe there have been similar, but not exactly the same type of proposal. We have put this forward to DOR. DOR is looking at it right now, and it's been passed by bond counsel and our general counsel. So, you know, we've gotten that feedback. Bond counsel seems to think that it is a plausible mechanism. And again, the state can approve anything it wants, whether DOR agrees with it or not. We would prefer to have DOR's support on it, obviously, and they are looking at that. But the second, the second part of that question is, the fund itself is self-regulating. The 50, if it's not 50, and we are going to, we are going to have a fire study committee coming together shortly, the request for a proposal or the RFQ or whatever it's called is already ready to go out. So by this time next year, we will have a much better idea on the cost and location of three fire stations. At that point, again, if the cost is less than what I threw in my projections, it just means that the taxpayers pay at that level rate for a shorter period of time, and the debt potentially gets issued earlier. The more expensive it costs, the longer, obviously, the fund has to run. But regardless of that, it's, the fund is only based upon whatever that actual cost is. It's not going to say, we're going to raise $50 million no matter what. We're going to first find out what it's going to cost to build. In the interim, we're going to be building up a stabilization fund. That stabilization fund can only build up to a level, that level being two and a half percent of the annual operating budget. Once it hits that level, it can't build any larger. So when the debt gets issued, you know, when the debt first, and again, it's like any other capital project, there'll be a building committee established, it will put forward a plan, it will put forward that plan to town meeting with a number, you know, a cost number attached to it. Town meeting will either vote it up or down. If it votes it up, then it will go out to the voters in terms of the bonding authority because it is using override money, so it must go out to the taxpayers to authorize the use of that money. That stabilization fund itself is built with override money. So, you know, there are plenty of safeguards built into it, and like I said, if it comes out that it's only a $30 million project, then the taxpayers are paying that $2.5 million for a shorter period of time, and the projects probably get completed earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Ms. Agostino, you raised a few other, or you raised another question, which was, well, can we send this, can we recommend a committee be established to study this? I'm going to, again, interpret, so you could make a motion to amend, but the only motion to amend that really would be appropriate or within scope would be to send it back to the Board of Selectmen for further study. To make a motion to amend to establish a committee now, I'd have to rule out of scope, but you could come back in a future meeting. So that's true. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Terry McNeil, Precinct Three. I share a lot of the concerns that have been raised when this was proposed just 20 minutes ago about the costs and what are we writing a check for if we approve this, but ultimately, I fall, I think Mr. Walker said it best, I think what we're doing is, if you supported Article 15, if you supported making this town more efficient and giving the people who run it the tools in the toolbox when it's necessary, I think this is perfectly consistent with that, largely because the concerns are subject to what's been echoed by a few folks here. To them, the Board of Selectmen, building a case to us at town meeting, and then more importantly, building a case to the voters, and the voters would need to approve, there's a concern about the price tag of $50 million, that the language is that it shall not exceed $50 million. The only way it gets to 50 is if we and the voters say it should get there. And if you're concerned about whether the voters will write a blank check, we need a turnout in this town higher than 30% in an election, and I think that will help determine where the town really wants to go. But ultimately, I think this gives them a tool they can use, and if we get to a point where we have real numbers, the selectmen can say, hey, we're working on with these real numbers, can be authorized to set up this fund because in the next year or two, we're going to be coming at you, and we'll start to chip away at it even a little bit. In this town, every bit helps, as every one of us can save from our tax bill. This is a town almost alone in greater Boston by being funded almost exclusively by those of us in this room and our neighbors. So I think this is innovative, I think it's helpful, I think there's checks on the selectmen to the extent you're concerned, and it's up to all of us to do our part to convince the people in town if it's a good or a bad idea when the time comes. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hiss, you're recognized.
Hi, Bob Hiss, Precinct Three. I'm kind of intrigued by the idea, but if this were a business proposition someone brought to me, I guess I'd ask for some numbers to flesh it out before I signed off. So I did some quick math, I want to see if I've got the idea right. So the last 10 years, our town budget goes up about 4% a year because overall...